Well, good evening, everyone, and happy inauguration day. So as a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pago, so I'm the chair for the Newbury Planning Board. Please permit me to confirm that all persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. George Morse. Larry Murphy.
Here.
Thank you, Larry. Leslie Matthews.
Here.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody Knight.
Here.
Thank you, Woody. Mary Stone.
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. Staff, town staff, when I call your name, please also respond to the affirmative. Martha Taylor.
Here.
Emily Noble.
Here.
Thank you, Emily. Anticipated speakers, presenters on the agenda, please respond in affirmative. Chris York.
Here.
Thank you, Chris. Kevin Whitney.
He's here.
Okay.
But he's muted.
Okay, great.
All right, I'm here.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Good evening. This is January 20th, 2021. A open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised indirectly by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order supersede the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which can be found posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video Zoom conference via via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the planning board's section of the town's website, which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID 83271413056 or by calling 9292056099 and entering the ID meeting number when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and, if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. Speaker concludes their remarks. I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees, except board members and staff, please remember to mute your phone star six to toggle to mute or unmute or computer button when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or your phones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captioned and recorded. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Whatever you wish to engage in with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. With your guys' comments, there will be an opportunity for public commenting questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, click on the participants button in the menu below the photo gallery at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Have your cursor over this area. If you don't see it, a list of participants will open and display on the right. At the bottom of the participant area, you will see an option to raise your hand. Please ensure that your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next. For telephoned participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your key bet. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in order in which they are listed. The system lists in order who first hits the raise hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask the question or comment. I will afford the applicant or participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your question. I will continue down the list of those in the race and call and again afford the participant applicant representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be any physical electronics, some little questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record and again, the participant applicant representative will be afforded an opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not been addressed. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call and the vice chair will make sure that I continue to do that. So we have a couple of public hearings that was that were scheduled to start at 7:15. And let's see, there are two public hearings. One of these will be continued to time to be determined. All right, so let me go from there. I'm going to pull up the agenda if my technology will cooperate. So let's see if that works. All right. Grab the agenda. All right, so to have a submission, is that correct? That was scheduled, Martha, but the submission is not going to be will be postponed until February. Is that correct?
That's correct. I reviewed the submission. As you recall, we've had a pre-application conference with Tom Zaccarico about the 15 Coleman Road project and his intention is to submit the OSRD special permit application and the definitive plan application simultaneously. This is, it's allowed. It's not usually the way they do it, but because of because of that, there needed to be some fine tuning of both applications to kind of separate, separate the two and kind of make clear what was being requested for each. So they're fine tuning that and they are planning to come back on February 3rd. They'll give me another set of the applications to review. So hopefully everything will be all set by then.
Okay. Great. All right, let's go back over here. You know what happens when you open up too many things on your computer, Martha? All line up on the bottom and you have to kind of fish through them. Okay, so we're at 7:09. So I see all business. I see the word none. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Wonderful. You know, I think we'll hold off on our new business regards to zoning things. Do I have a direct report that you might want to give us?
Yeah, I just wanted to update the board on a on a few things in terms of submissions and follow up on some of the closed public hearings that we've had, actually. So on the February 3rd, we're also expecting a submission on the 217 to 21 High Road definitive subdivision plan. This one will be what I'll call a little bit fast tracked because they had went through the preliminary plan process. And so the timeframe for this will be a little bit shorter than it'll be 90 days instead of 135 days, but I'll I'll provide that information again once it gets submitted. I do have the draft to review. Their attorney Doug Deshane was actually hoping to get it on tonight's agenda, but I didn't get the package until last Thursday morning. So it'll be coming the next time. And then we do have some plans that will be submitted for endorsement for 108 Main Street, 68 Green Street, and the 23 Chandell Drive Extension Project. With I've been working with the applicants of 108 Main and 68 Green and their attorneys on the language for their performance covenant, which is how they're both planning to take care of the performance guarantee portion. Needs to be finalized before the plans can be endorsed. And they've got a few tweaks to do. And same for Chandell Drive, although I think he's not going to do a restrictive covenant. He'll be providing a probably a cash performance guarantee, but we need to get an estimate from him and get that approved. So assuming that those are all in shape, those might actually be on the agenda for the February 3rd meeting as well.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll see. I know they're all, all, all of them are eager to move forward.
And do we have, in addition to the two submissions, public hearing wise on the third?
Public hearing wise, right now, the only thing that we have on the third is the three Newbury Port Turnpike continuance. So you know, we'll need to determine for the the public hearing tonight that's going to be continued, what the appropriate or best date would be for that continuance. So I'll pull up the our schedule when the time comes.
Okay. Anything else?
And I think that's it. There are a couple of other things that I can mention when we get into talking about the zoning amendments.
Okay, all right. Well, we have a couple of minutes. Maybe we could hit a couple of our liaison reports if that works. Do you want us, Larry, do you want to start with the ZB A?
Not a lot to report, Pete. They are meeting tomorrow night and they'll be looking at a preliminary draft decision on Cricket Lane, the 40B off of Pearson Drive. But beyond that, I don't have anything else to report.
Leslie on the select board.
There was some conversation on the three Newbury Port Turnpike, but it's been continued and the other anything else pretty much was licensing renewals.
Okay, great. Martha, anything on NVPC?
I don't actually. The monthly commissioners meeting is tomorrow, so I'll have more to report after that.
Okay, all right. Let's see, what can I tell you about conservation folks? Conservation met last night. The main reason for meeting was to discuss bylaws, but they're trying to modify with regards to expansion or some of the components. So that will be with that. We also spoke last night of about a couple of other, let's see.
Great Meadow.
Yeah, that that's just a lease that will probably be continued. It's a lease that's been in place, I think, for 15, 16 years. And I think it's been working pretty well. So I'm not exactly sure how that'll be handled. And a couple of the small things that took place last night, but we'll have be having another meeting, I think, on Tuesday. And 84 Boston.
Yeah, and the emergency exit road for 14th straight down in Plum Island has been continued as well.
Right, right. So it wasn't discussed. Right, thanks. Okay, so that's basically what's going on with conservation right now, but there'll be more coming on Tuesday. Okay, with that said, let's see where we're at. I think we can probably, hello, George?
You need to make sure that George has audio.
George, George, can you unmute yourself, my friend?
Done.
Perfect. Hello, there. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Excellent. I'm glad to see you and I'm glad you're here.
Thank you, George.
Hi there. Good to see you, Mary.
Good to see you, sweetheart.
All right, so we're coming right up to 7:15. And I do want to just do a couple of opening remarks. So we're to had two public hearings. One was the first is going to be a OSRD open space residential development, a special permit application for 105 Higher Road, map R48 lot 49 owner, author, and Sandra Castana's applicant is the Piro LLC. This is continuing from December 16, 2020. And this was to be continued at as an email request from a gentleman which received on 1/13/21. So we won't be having any discussion at this point in time, but we'll need to determine a good continuance time for that. Do we have any idea on that, Martha?
Well, the one, one thing that comes into play here is the discussion regarding the plan that was requested by the board at the last meeting had been postponed. So that's, that's the reason for the continuance tonight. That's going to be held on the 27th. So I think anytime after that, whether it's the 3rd or the 27th, I'm going to pull up our schedule right now. So can you all see that?
We can. Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, so right now, as I was saying before, actually, we have, I lied, we have two on February 3rd. We've got the continuance of three Newbury Port Turnpike and then we do have the two Old Point Road Site Plan Review application, which will be opening that night. That's, that's been advertised. The legal ad should have been in the paper on Monday, the first one.
Okay, and then we have a couple of submissions that day as well.
And then we do have some submissions and those will be brief, but we do have those for 15 Coleman Road and 217 to 21 High Road.
Okay, so does it make sense to put another public hearing on the 3rd? Perhaps not.
It could be, and we will probably have some discussion regarding zoning as well. The next opportunity after that for a regular meeting would be February 17th. And we have the AL Prime Gas Station continuance that night. And I have talked with town council. He's available both evenings.
Both the?
The 3rd and the 17th.
Okay. Do you have any preference on managing the load, Martha?
Not really. I mean, I think now if they're both on the 17th, either way, it could be a pretty full evening. Whether it's on the 3rd or the 17th.
Okay, so the three Newbury Port Turnpike. I think AL Prime might be well, you know what? Let's do it on the 17th. Brian's going to be available.
Yeah, he's going to be there for the AL Prime anyway.
Okay, board members, I just want to ask a quick, 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 what do you think? Larry, what do you think?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Leslie?
Yeah, that's good.
George?
Yes.
Mary?
That's fine. It's just the, the gas station is going to be a big deal. So as long as that could be managed properly, timewise.
Okay, Woody?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I guess that I entertain a motion to continue the hearing for 105 High Road to the 17th of February. That's 70.
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion, Larry?
Yes.
Any, no, any discussion on the motion?
No discussion, no.
George, any discussion?
None.
Leslie, discussion?
No.
Woody, discussion?
No.
Mary, discussion?
No.
On the motion, Larry.
Hello? Yes, I'm just, I missed one. 105 High Road is going to be continued to.
Okay, thanks. That's one way to solve it. We'll get that, we'll get to there in a second. We're in the middle of a motion, a roll call. Larry, you said yes, right?
I did say yes.
Okay, George?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
And Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Beautiful, in favor as well. I think there was a question that was asked and what when 105 would be continued. 105 will be continued to the 17th. Martha, make sure I'm saying this right. 17th of February, it's 7:15.
That's correct.
Okay, beautiful, great. Okay, okay, now let's continue with our agenda. Let me pull it back up. So our second public hearing is a continuance for a site plan review application for a new office building and site contractor storage. 84 Boston Road map R36 lot 23A applicant is K and R Construction Company owner is Sled Road LLC. Kevin Whitney and Ryan Ringrich managers continue from January 6th 2021. All right, let me start off by asking the Martha, if you have any concerns before I ask the app, any questions?
Do I right now?
Yeah, you're okay right now?
I have some questions or comments for later, but.
Okay, great. Okay, then let me ask the applicant if they have anything new to present to the board. Would that be Kevin or Chris?
Chris, I'll be speaking.
Okay, here as well. How you feeling, buddy?
I'm okay.
Good.
But I'm feeling okay.
Okay, good. Let's hope that you stay there.
I hope so.
Yep. Okay, what you got?
So I guess there was a sidewalk on Friday that I could not attend. We don't have any new materials from the last meeting. Play into the same, I can, Martha can let me share and might put them up on my screen.
All right, so that that's your desktop?
Yep.
Okay, we should be all set.
These are the same plans from December, December 28th is the last revision date on these. So nothing new to report. Kevin was in charge of the last hearing that I wasn't able to attend and kind of went over the latest set of plans and changes and lighting, I believe, and all that stuff. So I I don't have a whole lot to add at the moment. I can kind of take the questions that Martha has or the board has or kind of go from there, I guess, at this point.
Okay, well, I'll touch you. You mentioned lighting, Martha. What do you have on lighting for Chris?
Well, what they've done, and I think this was mentioned the last time, is they've they've reduced the lighting to building mounted only. So all the poles that were, any poles that were in the in the parking or drive area have been eliminated. So they've got three, three wall mounted fixtures on the front of the building. And as you can see from the photometric plan, it's a pretty looks like the throw on those is not, not very big. The ones on the back of the building, they're mounted on the side and on the back. And so those do have a larger, through other cover, a bit of a larger area. But much less impact than what was presented before. And it looks like these are I haven't looked more anymore at the specs than what was presented here, but it does look like they, you know, they're cut off fixtures. The color temperature is 3,000 from what's put on the drawings. So is that correct? Is that's what is that what's being proposed?
Yep.
So that's a fairly a warm color as opposed to the really bright white or bright blue ones elsewhere.
Okay, anything else, Chris?
At the top of my head, no.
Okay, like, okay, great. The board did conduct a sidewalk. Was that last?
Friday, Martha?
Yes.
Yes, that's right. And I just want to see if anyone had any comments from that observation. Larry, do you have any comments or concerns from that sidewalk?
No, it was very, it was very useful, but no, no comments.
Okay, great. Leslie, do you have any comments or concern from that side?
No, I agree with Larry. It was very useful. I think everything was, you know, the, the markers were really predominant and it was, we were able to see where they were and where the wetlands were. It was very easy.
Okay, great. Mary, any, any comments or concerns from the sidewalk?
No, I thought it was quite well done and learned a lot. Thank you.
Great, great, great. I don't have any additional concerns. Will be before conservation next week. I'm not sure where where they stand with things. There will be a lot of site work done on the site to bring it to the grade that being proposed. So there'll be a lot, a lot of clearing and a lot of a tree removal. I do, well, I guess I do have a concern, you know, and we talked about this, Chris, and I think Kevin, where is, where's Kevin? I just want to see.
I'm here.
Okay, great, thanks. She popped up when you said your voice. Thank you. It's amazing how the technology works and it just pops people around during a conversation. You know, I did express some concerns with regards to the impact on the wildlife that we're doing because we now created this very large corridor. So everything that we can do to try to mitigate that, I think is will be beneficial to our neighbors, the animals.
Yep.
Yep. Woody, did you have any question? Because you, you were on the first sidewalk, Woody, right?
Yes.
Any, any questions or concerns from when, when you did your sidewalk? I'm sorry, because I
No, not at all. I, I thought it was, everything was laid out so you could see where everything was. It was, it was good. It was, you know, I'm glad of the rest of the board about to go.
Okay, great, great. Okay, beautiful. Okay. Martha, do we have any public comments or concerns regarding this?
I have not received any, any comments via email or mail or any otherwise.
Okay, great. Is there anyone that's with us today in the audience that would like to have any questions or make any comments regarding this project? Just like Martha, did you see anything?
I don't, although with the screen being shared, it's
screen sharing, my friend? I can hold on one second very much. And thank you for sharing that plan with us. Okay. I don't see any hands up anywhere. Is, if there's anyone for any questions or comments regarding the site plan for 84 Boston?
No, I don't. And I don't. Most people's videos are black, so I'm not seeing any physically raised hands either.
Okay, board members, do you have any additional questions? Otherwise, I think we'll probably just move into reviewing the site plan decision criteria. Larry, any questions, concerns?
Well, not at this point, once we get into the criteria, yeah.
Okay, great. Beautiful. Leslie?
Not at this time.
Beautiful. George?
No.
Woody? No. Okay, Mary?
No.
Okay, great. Martha, could you pop up the criteria?
Sure.
So this will be the review for the site plan decision criteria. And you're probably going to have to make that bigger for these old tired eyes.
Yes. Thanks, Pete.
Yeah, maybe. One more, one more step up?
I was at.
That's better. Thank you very much. So we might need to move that. Is that everything in the field or is anything?
It goes down to the next page.
Yep, but not to the left or the right. Okay, beautiful. Okay, so our perfect, our decision criteria, as you can see, shall approve an application for site plan review defines the applicant has submitted sufficient information for which it can determine that the project will A, minimize the volume of cut and fill. Two, minimize the number of removed trees, caliper six inches or larger. Number three will minimize the area of wetland vegetation displaced. Number four, minimize soil erosion. And number five, minimize threat of air and water pollution. Number six is to minimize traffic congestion. Additionally, it will avoid removal of existing walls, existing stone walls or where removal is required, minimize the length of the removal. C, provide adequate stormwater management and other utilities consistent with requirements of Newbury Stormwater Bylaw and the Plating Board subdivision rules and regulations. D, maximize safety for pedestrians and vehicles both on the site and entering onto and egress from it. E, provide adequate access for each structure for fire and emergency service equipment. F, minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. G, minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage and other outdoor services used from public ways or premises residential use.
I'm sorry.
But that's okay. Now I just got to find out where I was. Yeah, H, thank you. Minimize intrusion from glare from headlights and light, sight lighting and surrounding properties. Next is minimize unreasonable departure from the character materials and scale of buildings in the vicinity as well as from public ways and places. J's prevent contamination groundwater from any source. K is enhance the appearance of the property to the greatest degree possible by means of landscaping and other site amenities. L is to minimize impacts of the use on adjacent properties through regulation of all and operation deliveries, noise, rubbish removal and onsite storage. And M is ensure compliance with the provision of Newbury's zoning bylaws, including parking and size. That was thing above regulations and use of the structured references in general law, excuse me, 48. Okay, so let's go back up to our beginning. Martha, we'll kind of work through these and see if there's any concerns. And I just kind of want to run, run through the board as we go through each. And I just kind of want to run, run through the board as we go through each, each of these. So on our first criteria, minimizing the volume of cut and fill. Larry, any thoughts?
Uh, well, I, I think it seems fairly obvious that they're gonna have to come close to, to clear cutting this, this lot. And also because of the, there's gonna have to be a lot of cut and fill, and I just wonder if maybe the developer can talk about what they can do to minimize that.
Would you like me to ask that question directly now, Mar, Larry?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, sure. So, uh, Kevin, do you want to answer that Larry's question?
Well, it, it, as far as limiting it, not doing what's shown in the plan, or I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, I, let me rephrase it. Are you satisfied that the plan that you're putting forward does the best you can to minimize it under the existing conditions and your needs?
Yes, I am. Um, it's, it's really the, the the, the least we can do with the property to, to make it usable for, for our needs. You know, we're keeping some green space for the septic system and whatnot, and then the wetland and, and we'll be having a tree buffer along Boston Road as well, some plantings.
Okay, and that may go to, to I to make too as well. I, I guess what I'm just looking for is some assurance from you that, that it has both to A1 and A2 that, that you're making the best effort you can under the circumstances, and I understand that you have needs that you need to fill here.
Yeah.
But and then I think you've answered it.
Yep, okay.
I think you answered my question.
Anything else, Larry, on that?
No.
Uh, George, anything on, uh, with regards to, I, maybe, maybe we'll just take A as a, as a, as a group. Uh, so the volume, fill, tree removal, area of wet land vegetation displaced, soil erosion, and threat of air and water pollution, we'll, we'll take that as one group with regards to that. Larry, any comments for any of those other components?
Uh, well, no, I think the wetlands, the Conservation Commission is going to address a lot of these issues, and frankly, I don't see I don't, I don't see traffic congestion at all as an issue.
Okay.
Uh, thank you.
Certainly. Yep, okay, beautiful. George, any concerns with A1 through 6?
No, I follow Larry's comments on though, it's, uh, there will have to be a significant cut and fill, but beyond that, I really have no concerns about that.
Okay, great. Leslie, do you have any concerns with regards to A1 through 6?
Um, on the cut and fill and the removal of where, where you're gonna have to remove to, to grade it, the certain way, will any of that be able to be reused on the property? Will any of that be like, for soil erosion, will any of the ledge be able to put, be put into the ground for water dispersal, soil erosion as far as like, seeping through like a leaching type of thing.
Um, I, I can speak on the fact that as far as the cuts and fills go, most of the fill that we will be cutting out of the site will be reused on the site. The topsoil will also be screened and reused on the site. As far as the, the ledge you, being used as a drainage system, maybe Chris could comment on that, he did all the drainage design.
Yeah, not really sure what you're talking, what you're looking for there, but you know, some of the ledge, I think Kevin can probably, you know, it's gonna be blasted, I think it'll be, you know, be blasted into such a small size that it can be reused as part of a fill-on site.
Yeah, I could just like, you know, looking at it that, anything that can be reused in and on this site to preserve what's already there would be greatly appreciated as far as like, conservation is concerned.
We, we will also be reusing any boulders we get on the site, we will reuse the boulders if possible, you know, you don't know what you get until you dig them out of the ground for some of the smaller retaining walls, so they'll have a very natural look.
Oh, so the retaining wells you may not be bringing in uh, purchase material, but try to reuse what is already there on site?
Exactly, the shorter walls that do not have to be engineered, we, we can use boulders for, if we, if we get good boulders, you know, good candidates for it out of the ground.
Yeah, sounds good, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Leslie. Woody, do you have any concerns regarding A1 through 6?
No, I do not. I have an understanding of what they're trying to do here, and I think it's, I think it's good.
Okay.
As far, as far as the, I understand that there's gonna be some trees and some cut and fill, but the fact that they're gonna use it on site, I think it'll look nice there.
Okay, all right. Mary, do you have any concerns with regards to A1 through?
No, I'm, I'm reassured that there'll be attention paid to these issues, so I have no concerns.
Okay. Um, I, I do want to ask, Martha, do you have any concerns with regards to any of the A1 through 6?
Um, I just wanted to confirm that with regard to the cut and fill, that really it's gonna be balanced cut and fill, so nothing's gonna be imported or exported from the site, I think that was mentioned at the site walk, and I just wanted to confirm that. Oops, Kevin, you're muted.
Yep, so, we, we intend on using as much of the material on site as we can, I'm not sure if we'll be able to use all of the, the rock, but I'm not really sure how much we'll get until we start excavating, it's, it's hard to exactly tell. Um, so there, there, there may be a small amount of export, but I don't see it being a very significant amount.
And you don't see the need to bring anything onto the site?
Um, only standard building materials, you know, there'll be displacement for the concrete foundation, the septic system, we'll be bringing sand in.
And then, right, okay.
That sort of stuff, yep.
And I guess I just wanted to make it, make sure that the board is, is clear that basically the site is gonna be leveled, so there's gonna be sort of a plateau, and then a nine, you know, nine or 10-foot wall around the, the wall. So you know, that is gonna be a significant change to, to what we saw out there. Um, I do have sort of a related question, which has to do with the grading right along the edge at Boston Road. As I was looking at the, the drawings and where it's gonna have to be brought down for the driveway that's on the right-hand side, we talked about grading it, grading it in, but I'm actually not seeing contours within the right-of-way, and um, I know this came up as part of Joe's comments, but, um, it's not clear to me exactly how all of that is gonna be blended in from the site. You know, in, into, into the right-of-way, because I don't, it, it's gonna have to be brought down somewhat. So I don't know if this is a matter of Chris showing a little bit more on the drawings or?
So I had originally shown some contours in the right-of-way, Joe had mentioned, had a comment about not showing contours, where he kind of showed the grading tying in within our property line.
Yeah, and it's
Ultimately, it's, it is all gonna be taken out, there's a pretty good gnoll of ledge in that area through its elevation 32.
Right.
We're coming down to about 24 or so, so it's, that all will be blended in. I mean, I can show it, I can, I can bring the plan up again for you to kind of show you what we're talking about, if you want me to.
Yeah, that might be helpful, because I wasn't, it, it looked like some of the contours just kind of died, and there weren't, I didn't see, and it might just be, be me, I didn't see the contour numbers right in that area, so let me, I'll stop sharing if you want to bring yours back up again.
Zoom in to the spot. So the road, you know, road kind of, where it goes from 16 up to 18, to 20, to 22. So we show it, I think the 22 contour, and it runs along the edge of pavement. And then up into our site, and we tie in the 22 onto our site, and the 24 is right at the entrance to the at the radius that curb return. That ultimately, you look at this on the screen, 24. Actually, okay, it just kind of runs up into the side a little bit, and then ultimately ties in right in here, so I mean, this really doesn't, this is already existing, this is existing 20 contour, this is existing 22, and existing 24. It probably doesn't change a whole lot, yeah, we are able to tie in the grades on our property ultimately.
I think kind of what's happening in between there, so you've got the 24 again.
I mean, you got, like, kid, got the, you know, you got the 30 ledge outcrop, that would be, that wouldn't be there anymore, there's a 28 kind of wraps all the ways around. I just tell it's but here.
Right where your hand was, right?
Yeah.
Go, go back up again, a little bit to your right. Sort of right, the, those two little pointed ones right there, so what, what are those grades, and what are they tying into?
That is the you see, that's the 22.
Looks like 28.
So this one's a 26, I believe, which would also come out.
So that's all coming down, because you're going sort of from 20.
So instead of, you know, so instead of pitching up the way it does now, right off the road, up about four or six feet, you know, it's ultimately gonna be flat all through in here. I originally had the 24 contour kind of pushing out further onto the right-of-way. Joe's comment about not grading out there, I pushed it back onto our site to make it work.
Right, but it still looks like that's gonna have to be flattened some, somehow, unless it really goes up and back down again. I'm sorry, I don't mean
Try to show, when you take, try to show condos when you're taking out existing condos, because they, you kind of got to picture that they're just disappearing. Now, these, this thing says, this 30, this 28, this 26, they won't be here anymore.
Right, right.
Ultimately, this area in here between the edge of pavement and the stone wall is gonna be pretty flat. An elevation 24.
How high was the gnoll being? That it's gonna be between the, the right-of-way and the property?
I'm sorry, what was that?
How high would that gnoll be? You just said that it was gonna be flat.
Well, right now, then, right now, the gnoll was about six, on the site, it's about eight feet higher than the road, but ultimately, it's gonna be, it's gonna be flattened here, probably won't be a gnoll here anymore.
Right, that's what I'm getting at, and it's not actually, so the existing contours in there aren't clear, and it's still gonna be grading within the right-of-way. So I, I'm just trying to clarify that, I don't mean to belabor it.
Chris, is the current grade of the gnoll in the right-of-way 26?
Well, it's higher than the road by about three or four foot, isn't it?
Yeah, this is 22, 24, 26, I mean, yeah, this is a 20, this might be a 30.
Yeah, that looks like a 30, that's, that's a 28 where you are right now, 26, and so that's, you know, that's coming down almost six feet.
Sorry, so right in here, this little height, it's the little gnoll right off the edge of the road, it's about six feet higher than the road right here. And ultimately, I feel we should take this 24 and, you know, ultimately, I should show it more into the right-of-way, the way I had it before. Kind of a more the, the better depiction of how it'll look out there.
So, hold that thought for a second, Chris. Martha, how does, how does that work when somebody's going to significantly use the right-of-way, the town, the town piece of this?
Well, that's, uh, I think that, that comes to, back to a discussion that I've, I've been wanting to have with James first to see what his thoughts are, and I don't know if it's something that actually, you know, then has to go before the, the select board or if the planning board has, has authority over that, quite honestly.
My impression, when we went on, on the first site walk, Chris and Kevin, was that the gnoll, the height of the gnoll, the right-of-way would, would stay in there, you're gonna put more plantings on top of it, so that the business itself would be pretty well secluded by that, that was my takeaway from the site walk.
We were gonna, we were talking about, once this area was flattened out, Kevin had mentioned talking about putting in a, a new artificial berm out in here to kind of block the parking lot. So this would kind of be flattened out to elevation 24, and then they put in another, you know, two or three-foot-high berm with some plantings on top of it.
Okay, but that's not shown, that's, that's not what you're showing right now.
No, that's not showing, but that's the, you know, if if you, you know, if we go that way, now I can, I can show that on the final plans.
But we also have an existing stone wall to, to deal with, that, that we want to have retained, right?
We definitely want to keep the wall as well.
Yeah, we, yeah, we talked about any spots where we're about displaced, with the, we'd fix it up. Part of the process.
So I guess, again, I don't mean to belabor this, but what I'm getting at is I think that that area needs, needs to be a little more clarified and refined before you know, as a, as a final set of, of plans for approval.
Let, if, if I may?
Yes, Leslie?
They, the size of the lot and the amount of, um, how you want to level it out in percentage-wise with keeping some of the original features like the stone wall, what would you say that that would be? To, just to make it, you know, more easily understood by anybody that is watching and participating in this meeting tonight, so I know you have a lot of highs and lows on that piece of property. What is like the general level of, or the general grade that you want the property to be at?
I believe 24, is that correct?
Yeah, 24 is pretty much gonna be the entire building, the front of the building. Pretty, pretty much where the pavement is, it's all gonna be 24 through here.
So that was, you know, the takeaway from the site walk, Leslie, was it was gonna be a 10-foot-high wall between the wetlands and what would then be created.
So that expand, does that expand further than what Martha was speaking of as far as what's close to the roadway, close to Boston Road? The little, you know, I don't have the, the ability, but I don't know.
Well, if you look at, if you look at the, um, the topo lines that are sort of graded out, you'll see some numbers like 30, and next to it, you'll see a solid line that says 22, so you know, you're looking at, at coming down about eight feet in that, in that location.
Okay, I see it, great, I see that. So that 30 is gonna come down to the lower level and
And then if you go And then if you go over towards the left, I think the grades go down, the existing grades go down to about fourteen feet and those are going to be brought up to twenty-four feet. So, you know, when Kevin was talking about balance, cut and fill, what's coming down off the, you know, the thirty is going to be going in to, to bring up that fourteen. So the site is essentially going to be, from my understanding, is the site is essentially going to be level at about four. But it's coming down from a high of about thirty-two and up from a low of about fourteen, if that's correct. And Chris, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Nope, no, that's correct.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. More understandable. Thank you.
Welcome.
Martha, any other concerns?
The only other thing while we're talking about tree removal, as we noted, there is going to have to be a public hearing for any trees in the right of way that are being removed. So I think that it would be helpful on a, a final set of plans to actually show the ones that are, you know, of, of decent caliper that are begin, going to be coming out, some of the ones that we identified during the sidewalk, is there really not shown? You've got a sort of general squiggly line for, for the existing trees, but I think that trees in the right of way that are going to be subject to public hearings should be identified, or I would suggest that they be identified on the plan.
Is there a size, minimum size you'd want to show? Obviously, we don't need to show like, you know, scrub, shrub trees or anything, but you know, anything over eight inches, ten inches.
Um, I have to go back. I mean, I think site plan review criteria actually says that any trees over six inches or, or monitoring caliper should be identified. I can double check with the tree warden to see also what, you know, what his requirements are under mass general law, you know, basically any, any clearing that's in the right of way on town property is going to have to be, you know, go before him. But I can get back to you on that.
Yeah, if you can, just to give us an idea how many trees we need to locate on the right of way. The only, the only way that I'm asking for on the plans is the, to locate all the trees on site over eight inches or six inches, whichever it is, but we need to locate those within the right of way. We can, we can do that. I don't think, I don't think there's going to be many, but we can do that.
Okay, yeah, I'll double check on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other concerns from your perspective on A one through six? We're going to have, we're going to have to talk with DPW and then also a conversation with the tree ward, it sounds like.
Right, no, I think those were the only ones I had on, on those particular, thank you.
Okay, okay, great. Would you mind popping the criteria back up? Thank you. Beautiful. So going from A one through six, we will now move on to B, which is going to be avoid removal of existing stone walls. And when removal is required, minimize length of removal. So I'm just going to again, go down through the board numbers. Larry, any concerns?
If I recall, then from the sidewalk, there is a stone wall that comes in from the east for short distances. Is that correct? And is that going to, would, would, if, if my memory is, is correct, what are the plans for that wall?
Keep it.
Well, I can comment that any, any of the wall that does need to be removed for grading and whatnot and tree removal. We intend on putting the country stone wall back in place as it is now. To keep that, that country kind of look.
Yeah, I mean, I, if, if my memory serves, it's not a great, it's, it's not a great distance from the east boundary, but there is something there. Okay, thank you.
George, any, okay, thank you, sir. Leslie? Maybe I'll come back for Leslie. Woody?
No, I don't have any, I don't have anything further to say on that.
Okay, Woody, anything on the stone walls?
Uh, no, not, not that hasn't already been asked, no.
Mary? Mary? Did I lose Mary's audio?
I apologize. No, no, I don't have any issues with this.
Okay, great. Just, yeah, none, just for clarification, Kevin. So you're going to bring, or actually, Chris, we're going to bring, be bringing the grade down to those entrance points. So the stone walls will be disturbed there. And then at the the, with the grade alteration was that we were talking about, is the stone wall going to be completely reconstructed at that point? Because you're going to be lowering that component down to twenty-four?
Yeah, so where we have to remove the wall to do the grading, she intends to save those wall stones.
Okay, so basically the wall is going to be disarticulated. You're going to bring it down to twenty-four or so, and then you're going to recreate a, a stone wall.
Exactly, yep.
That's okay, okay. And you're going to be using the original stones or are you going to be supplementing those stones?
Uh, the intention is to use the original stones. We'll, we'll put them aside and those specifically for reuse.
Okay, great. Martha, any concerns with regards to stone wall?
Nothing in addition to discuss things.
Okay, great. Next, board members provide adequate stormwater management and other utilities consistent with your crimes of Newbury Stormwater Bylaw and Plenty Boys subdivision rules, regulations. Any concerns with regards to this, Larry?
I just assumed that they've complied with any of the peer reviewers' comments, Martha.
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. George?
No comment.
Very good. Leslie?
Uh, nothing further to add.
Okay, Woody? No, thank you. Mary?
No.
Okay, great. With regards to D, maximize safety for pedestrians and vehicles both on the site entering and onto and egressing from it. Oh, Martha, I didn't ask you if you had any concerns with regards to stone wall. We're, we're good with the recommendations.
Uh, no, I think, I think they've addressed all of Joe's comments.
Okay, great. Thank you. So with regards to pedestrian vehicle both on and off the site entering, Larry, do you have any concerns?
No, I don't.
Okay, very good. Thank you, George.
How were the sightlines to the left if you're coming out of the site?
Yeah, do you want to talk about the sightlines, Chris or George?
Sightline.
I'm not blind, but real short sightlines.
So we, we have enough distance on both driveways. I I thought I put on a plan here, but maybe I didn't. We have at least two hundred feet in each direction from the southerly driveway and from the northerly driveway facing in both directions. You know, because there's, there's no speed that hopes it on this road in this area. Probably a design speed of thirty miles an hour. Requires about two hundred feet of sight distance, which we have more than enough than, more than enough of for each driveway.
Okay, I guess my concern was it might be necessary to ask the town to put in caution, traffic entering and exiting ahead. Which might be reasonable. If you have that long a sightline, that's fine.
Yeah, because you will be having, George, you bring up a initial point, you have the exiting from the transfer station, don't you, right there?
We have it right across the street from the transfer station as well.
Yeah, the exit from the transfer station. And with that, with that, with that entrance being entrance or an exit for most large trucks leaving, that would be an exit point, right? But they'd be going out early in the morning?
Either could be used, it's designed to go either way. But, um, yeah, we, we intentionally lined up that it basically matches the transfer station and it has it at the high point of the road there. So you, you have a very long sight distance right there.
In both directions, Kevin, right?
Yes, correct.
Yep. Very good. Um, what do I leave with George? Leslie, any questions?
Yeah, I'm gonna go back to like this the my viewpoint on this for safety reasons is should be one side entrance, one side exit. The exit side has a lot shorter view than the entrance side. Just view, just being down there the other day. However, I think people are used to enter, exiting on that area because of the landfill. So they're very aware of vehicles enter, exiting off of that way in either the necessarily direction. That's, that's all.
Okay, more of a comment than a question, Leslie.
Yeah, more of a comment than a question. It's just, I my, I guess the question would be why not just have one way in and one way out? And that would be the safest, I would think, the safest way to handle the driveway as far as like entering and exiting the street.
So comment to question?
That's a, a question. Why can't it be just one way in and one way out?
Okay. Kevin?
The, the trucks, if the eighteen-wheelers have to pull in and they need a forty-foot radius in order to pull back out of the garage, that radius is probably going to go in the right-hand direction, which is going, going to be the, across from the exit of the landfill. And it just makes more sense, the question is, does it make more sense to have that be the exit?
It, it is, makes more sense to have that as the exit for tractor trailers to leave, but it's also if I'm pulling in and I'm just going to the office and I wanted to park at those parking spots at the front of the building. It makes, it, it, it kind of makes more sense to drive into that spot too. That's why we left them so they're not, I, I believe, Chris, what, what's the width of the entrance driveway?
Where the exit. The one out front is twenty-four, the truck entrance is twenty.
Okay, so yeah, we wanted to keep it so that the trucks could even do like a horseshoe, so to speak, a loop if they had to.
Right, but let me just, if I can just present this to you as an alternative. That your parking out front could be diagonal, which will always encourage people to exit through the, the proper exit area. You see what I'm saying?
Yep. Yeah, suggestions.
Yeah.
Well, the issue with that is the parking out front is, it doesn't, it dead ends at the, at the edge of the building.
Stand the parking out front will never probably be taken full advantage of. That you're not running like an in-house business. It's more of a onsite business.
Correct.
So that, you know, anything that can be done to persuade people logically to follow the guidelines of the route would be easier on your part. My, that's my only suggestion. And that's, you know, I'm sorry, that probably isn't a question, but that's, that's my input on this point.
I appreciate that, Leslie. Thank you. Thank you. Woody, questions regarding pedestrian vehicles on and off the site D?
I don't have any questions. Just the comment.
Yep.
I know there's substantial work proposed in the right of way. That we were discussing earlier. I only see that, some of that work as a helping with the line of sight and people traveling on Boston Road and people exiting or entering the facility. I, I think some of that work on the right of way might help with some line of sight, but as far as any questions beyond that, no, I don't, I don't see any problems.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, Woody. Mary?
No.
Okay, great. Martha, any concerns looking at, at this from, from that perspective?
No.
Okay, great. With regards to E, which is providing adequate access for each structure, for fire and emergency service equipment. Larry, do you have any comments, questions or concerns?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you, sir. George?
None.
Great. Leslie?
Um. Will it, will there be, where, is there going to be a fire hydrant located in a quick vicinity for this, only because, you know, it's, you have flammable. You know, you've got oil and gasoline and things of that nature. Will there be like a fire hydrant just close by to extend for extinguation?
As far as I know, there's no fire hydrants on that road. I don't think there's any town water. I think it's well water.
Yeah, there is, there's no water service down there.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a well on site proposed.
So I assume the building is going to be sprinkled?
Uh, no, it is not. It is under the
Under their square footage.
Of that, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, George.
Uh, yes, has the fire chief reviewed this material at all, the application? The only reason I ask, he might look for a system of some type to be available to have water instead of bringing in a pumper, which might take a while.
Kevin, do you want to address that?
I haven't had any contact with the fire department.
Martha, is that under our wheelhouse for that conversation to take place?
Yeah, I haven't gotten any feedback from him on that, but I will contact him. I've just made a note of that.
Okay, or any additional fire suppression recommendations?
Right.
Okay. Great, okay. Very good point. Thank you, George.
Okay.
Uh, where did I leave? Woody, I think you didn't have any questions, did you, Woody? Or that was it? No. Okay, great. Mary?
No.
Okay, beautiful. Continuing along with F, minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. Larry, do you have any concerns or questions, comments regarding that?
No.
Okay, George?
None.
Uh, Leslie?
None.
Uh, Woody?
No.
Mary?
No.
Okay, any concerns from your perspective, Martha?
Uh, no.
Okay, great. Minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage and other outdoor services viewed from public ways or premises residential used or, or zone. Larry, do you have any concerns or questions or comments regarding?
No, I mean, there's no residences within the
Okay, great.
In the area.
Thank you. George?
Uh, no concerns there at all.
Thank you. Leslie?
None.
Great. Woody?
No.
Uh, Mary?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, and Martha, you're comfortable as well?
Uh, yes.
Very good. Oh, you moved it up on me. Good, thank you. H is minimize intrusion of glare from headlights or, and or sight lighting surrounding, on surrounding properties in our area. Larry, any questions, comments or concerns?
Uh, not for headlights. I, I think we do have a new lighting plan, do we not, that tends to minimize what's the term? Light spills over. And so, no, any, anyway, no.
Okay, thank you, sir. George?
Yeah, there's no lighting on the landfill edges there.
Uh, currently, George, there isn't, but there might be some lighting going in once a solar project goes in Martha. Am I speaking incorrectly?
Um.
Or do we not have that information yet?
I don't recall actually seeing any lighting that's proposed for that. I don't recall actually seeing any lighting that's proposed for that.
Whatever it is, there's probably no conflict.
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly not. You know, there's not any residential use there. I'm looking at the photometric plan again. It certainly does appear that there's no light trespass. And the lights are shielded.
Uh, Leslie?
Uh, I think the lighting has already been addressed. It looks fine.
Okay, oh, Woody?
Um. I was, I'm glad to see that it's 3K lighting and the pictures point down. And, uh. Other than that, I have no other, no other concerns or questions about the lights at this time.
Mary?
Just a comment, I don't understand the relevance of this since aren't these surrounding properties except the dump?
There aren't any surrounding properties, uh, but, uh, I guess the question is light scatter. Um, cause we've kind of seen that had, have an influence. From the contiguous property, uh, and it's very weather dependent, whether it's rainy or snowy or foggy.
Right.
Because, um, it does have a lot of a effect on night sky.
Oh, the night sky, okay, but not surrounding properties.
Depends on how you want to define surrounding properties, I guess. I'll get it, Martha.
Sky, sky properties.
Yeah.
Okay, right, I, I, no, I don't have any issues with this.
Uh, Martha, any other concerns or questions?
Uh, not on the, not on the, uh, lighting.
Okay, great. With regards to. I, which is minimize unreasonable cost from the character, materials and, and scalability in the vicinity as viewed from public ways and places. Larry, any concerns with regards to I or comments or questions?
No.
Thank you, sir. George?
Not at all.
Thank you, George. Leslie?
No.
Thank you. Woody?
No.
Great. Uh, Mary?
No.
Great. Uh, Martha?
Uh. No, I mean, I think it's gonna be a metal building, which is not, not dissimilar from what we have at Newbury Self-Storage. I think that it would be helpful still to, um, you know, Kevin has described the colors. It's still showing up as pink in the drawings, so it might be helpful if there can be. For a final set, you know, something that either describes it or better, a better rendering of, of what it's gonna look like.
Okay, well, we can, we can work on that. Um, I've just delayed on final building. Plans because if I can't get this approved. To spend all the money on the final plans, you know, it's kind of the cart before the horse, you know?
Yeah, understood.
Yeah.
Appreciate that, Kevin. Sure. Um, moving on to J, which is prevent contamination of groundwater from any source. Questions, comments or concerns? Uh, Larry?
I guess, well, that would again come back to peer review. Everything's been satisfied. Anything our peer reviewer has, has. Uh, identified, Martha?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, then, then no questions.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, George?
No question.
Great, thank you. Leslie?
No questions.
Great. Uh, Woody?
No, no questions.
Uh, thank you. Mary?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. And Martha, you're okay with this?
Uh, yes.
Okay, great. Uh, K is enhance the appearance of the property to the greatest degree possible by means of landscaping and. Other site amenities. Uh, Larry, do you have any questions or concerns or comments?
No.
Thank you, sir. Uh, George?
What does that mean in this situation? You have the landfill right across the street effectively. What are you enhancing?
Yeah, right.
That's not an unreasonable question.
Bingo.
I mean, are we just saying some trees, a stone wall down the edge? We don't want lots of new plantings because, well, that might be lovely. It's not necessary.
I think there's some planting, George, that are, um, that were discussed, uh, on the sidewalk, and I think they're on the plans. Uh, to kind of create a buffer between, uh, the right-of-way and the property. Is that right, Chris?
Yeah, we got some scattered, uh, I guess we got the, we'll show that berm on the north side. It's a bit of a screen. We show some random, the, you know, decorative. Ornamental trees kind of scattered throughout the front of the site. You know, right out, right in front of the building, we show, you know, the area of, there'll be kind of landscape with. You know, annuals and, you know, typical small perennial, so. We show a little bit of landscaping on site, not too much.
Yeah, I can understand that around the, the building. That's, that'll make it very attractive, but I think scattered and minimal beyond that is all you really have to do.
Yeah, yeah, that was the intent. We didn't want to go, you know, we didn't want to have to do a full. Landscape architectural design for. The site out here that's kind of hidden from public view for the most part. Just enough to make it look pretty once it's all done.
Good.
All right, thank you, George. Uh, Leslie?
Uh, nothing on this.
Thank you.
Fine.
Uh, Woody?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Mary?
No, I would assume that Kevin would want, uh, the employees to have a nice place to work, so would probably work on this area. In terms of enhancing the appearance of it. With plantings and grass and shrubs and whatever else, right?
Yes, I mean, this is a, this is a huge investment for us and, uh, you know, we, we, we view this place like, like, like our home. We'll take care of it like our home, you know? And, uh, we want it to be a nice-looking building with nice. Uh, you know, surroundings, you know?
Right, so that's why I don't have any issues with this. Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome. Thanks, Mary. Uh, Mary, Martha, any concerns from your perspective?
Um, I, well, I have kind of a related question, and this was something that, uh, I think Joe brought up in one of his early comments, but. The parking is hard up against the building. There's no buffer between the parking spaces and the building itself, and I think this was. Identified as something that would be discussed at a later time, so I'm just kind of putting that back on the table. And it's related a little bit to the detail for the handicap sign, which is. Uh, shows a sign on a bollard, but if there's no landscaping, I'm not quite sure exactly where that would go. So I, I don't, I don't know if anybody has concerns about the fact that the, the parking is hard up against the building or whether some sort of a landscape buffer would be appropriate.
For, for maintenance standpoint, I would prefer to not have, um, a landscape buffer there. Um, we were thinking just having line striping and, um. We can definitely put a bollard, you know, say a, a, a foot off the face of the building, holding the sign. And I believe the spots are fairly deep spots. They're, they're full-size, so, um. You know, there, there should be a walk path, you know, enough room to walk between the fronts of cars and the, the building face.
And this is such a low-traffic area. There'd be so few cars out there anyways. It's a pretty safe, uh, pretty safe environment out there without the need of a sidewalk or. Landscape buffer or anything in front of the building.
Okay, uh, any other concerns, Martha, or from peer review?
Uh, no.
Okay, great. Uh, could you slide the screen just a little bit? After K?
Yep.
Beautiful, thank you very much. Uh, so we have L, which is minimize impacts the use of adjacent properties through regulation of hours and operation deliveries. Noise, rubbish removal and onsite storage. Uh, Larry, any concerns or comments or questions regarding?
No, I don't think they're gonna disturb the landfill.
Okay.
Station.
Great.
Pretty sure they won't.
Very good. George?
Yeah, no, thanks.
Thank you. Leslie?
No.
Okay, uh, Woody?
No.
Okay, uh, Mary?
No, sir.
Beautiful. And Martha, do you have any concerns, questions or comments?
No.
Okay, great. Um, finally, we have. Uh, M, which is, uh, ensure, uh, compliance with provisions, Newbury zoning, uh, bylaws, including parking and signs. Um, signs. Did we discuss signs at all? Uh, was there anything on the plans for that, Martha? I don't recall.
Um, I actually don't remember seeing anything. I, I know that there's a sign proposed. I don't remember seeing a design for it. But I could have missed it.
I just have a, I just have a note on the plan that shows a sign out front. It just says, propose business sign and show me all. Applicable zoning regulations. A pretty standard, basic sign, uh, the note on the plan.
All right, and typically, I think we do get that design as part of the, the package. Obviously, we'll have to comply with zoning.
And is that going to be an illuminated sign or just a daytime sign?
No, we, we don't plan on any illuminated sign. What we would actually like to do is salvage a piece of the granite from the ground. And do a engraved like boulder or something like that.
Thanks, very nice.
Very, very low-key and tasteful.
Well, I think you're gonna have a couple boulders that will allow that opportunity to occur.
Exactly.
Pick your, pick your boulder.
Yeah, that's why we really don't have a design. I don't, I mean, I guess we could make a small draw.
Great. Uh, Larry, any questions, comments, concerns regarding this last, uh?
No, I, I would think just the, just the condition of approval that, that the parking and signage comply with the Newbury zoning bylaws ought to be sufficient.
Okay.
For a project like this.
Okay, great. Um, George, sir?
No concerns.
Alrighty, uh, Leslie?
No concerns.
All right, uh, Woody?
No.
Beautiful. And Mary?
No, I would assume they'd be in full compliance with the bylaws. Okay, so, so.
All right, uh, and Martha, do you have any, uh, additional comments?
Uh, no, but I'd like to go back to L for a second if we will.
Yeah.
Just to talk about hours of operation again. To make sure that everybody's clear on that.
Yeah, our typical hours of operation are, um. Around 6:00 AM, uh, to, uh, 6:00 PM.
6:00 AM to 6:00 PM?
Yes.
You got some good long-working crew people there, Kevin?
Well, sometimes you start earlier and you end at 3:00 and then other side, yeah, you know, other times you run late, but yeah, it, it could be. That's the maximum, most likely.
Right.
That's Monday through Friday?
Uh, yes.
What about weekends?
Um. For the most part, we're closed on weekends. Occasionally, I may go there personally to work in my office, uh, but, uh, that's, that's the extent.
But other, other workers are allowed to go into their offices, correct?
Yes, they could, yep.
Okay. Alrighty, then.
Um, Kevin, um. With the, you know, the lighting and the seasonal changes. Will it, will, will it always be a 12-hour day or if you're, if we're getting into like, you know, we're into the winter months and it. Gets dark earlier. Does that, will that change your hours of operation?
Um, it can, but I wouldn't want to have that be a condition. Um, on, on, on approval. Um, because certain projects we may be working, we may have to. End later or start earlier, so I'd say that, that the range of 6:00 to 6:00 is the, uh. Broadway to keep it.
Okay.
That good, Leslie?
Yep, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so we've kind of gone through our criteria, folks. Uh, Martha, you've kind of summarized our, 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 uh, potential concerns and questions.
I'm sorry, do you want me to summarize some or?
No, 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 I said that you, you, you have, you have record of, of concern.
I do, I do, yes.
So, uh, Kevin, you still have to, uh, uh, cross the hurdle of conservation.
Correct.
Okay, and, um, so there'll be, that'll be next week, and I'm not sure if, uh, there'll be more discussions, uh, from there. Um, with that, um, I just want to ask board members, uh, do you think it would be appropriate to, uh, have Martha start the process of, uh. Uh, drafting a decision, um, which might be contingent, uh, on a couple different factors and maybe even conservation. Um, what do you think of that, Larry?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think so. Martha's comfortable with it. And, uh, yeah, I would say go ahead.
Okay, uh, George?
Yeah, I have no problem with having Martha start a draft, except to the extent that there may be some changes brought in by conservation. Okay, would be significant and may well affect the, uh, the decision. However, Martha being Martha, she can do a very nice job either way, I think.
All right. Thanks to George. Appreciate the comment. Uh, Leslie?
Um, I agree with, uh, the fact that, um, I think we can start the process and if Concom comes back. We can, um. Change it out if need be.
All right, thank you, Leslie. Uh, Woody?
No, uh, I would, I would say start the process, uh. And if there are already, as everyone else has said, if there are any issues, they'll come, come in, in Concom.
Okay, great. Uh, Mary?
We're definitely ready to start the process. Okay, I'm, I'm for it.
Okay, so. Um, let me just ask, uh, Chris or, uh, Kevin, do you have any questions, uh, for us right now?
Um, no, I don't have any questions. We're just, uh, you know, very eager to move forward with the process.
Okay, got it. All right. Uh, Martha, do you have enough regards to, from the board to, to start the, uh, draft?
Uh, yes, I don't know if you want to actually have a formal vote to.
I'd be, I'd be happy to do that. Would someone like to make a motion and, uh, to, uh, direct their Martha to do that?
And so move.
Thank you, Larry. Is there a second to that?
Okay.
All right, is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion, Larry?
No.
George, discussion?
None.
Leslie, discussion?
No.
Woody, discussion?
No.
Mary, discussion?
No.
On the motion, Larry, how say you?
Yes.
Great, thank you, George?
Yes.
Great, on the motion, Leslie, how say you?
Yes.
Uh, Woody?
Yes.
Uh, Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Great, and the chairs and support as well. Okay. Um, so let's think about a continuation, Martha. We're out.
Okay, let me pull this down.
Thank you very much.
Let back up, can you see that?
Uh, we do.
Okay.
So we just put, uh, 105 on the 17th.
Right.
So the 17th is gonna be full, so we're looking, uh, and conservation's gonna be next week.
Uh, next Tuesday.
All right, next week. Um, and I'm not sure if they're gonna be ready to roll or not, so I, I think we're probably looking at the 3rd of March. Does that make sense, Martha?
Uh. Yeah, and it would be nice to do it sooner, but I'm not sure that that's possible.
Do. 3rd of February, 3rd of February. I don't know if conservation's gonna be done by then. Cause next week is gonna be the 20, uh, 26th, 25th, 26th. Uh, which will then be a week following. Uh, if they have anything that's still pending, then we're just gonna be pushing this out further.
Is it possible to go for the 3rd and if conservation doesn't allow it, we can push it from there?
We can continue it to the 3rd with the understanding that it might, very well might be continued to then the 3rd.
I'd appreciate it.
Martha, any legis, uh, any legislative, any legislative concern that you're getting, doing that for you?
Just trying to get it drafted, that's all.
Cause that, that, um, that's, that's the only. That gives us, what, two weeks?
Yes.
Which is kind of tight schedule to get it drafted, right?
It's, it's tight, but we can try to get a start on it.
We can get a.
I think it's, I think it's tight and I think there's a lot going on and that, it's just my opinion, but I don't know enough about how much. Time this other stuff takes, but pretty booked up there.
I think if the Concom can come through with a decision on the 26th. That, um. We, we might be in really good shape.
That's just a matter of time of actually put, pulling a decision together.
Yeah.
With everything else that's going on. Right.
It's, it's managing load. And I don't think. Cause we have a lot of load going on right now.
I think, I think in fairness to everybody involved, that we probably should. Unfortunately for the applicant, we should wait till either the 17th of March 3rd. Uh, give Martha some time and. You need to contact with fire and there's a Concom next week, so.
And you have to hear that also back from the tree warden and you also have to be in contact with highway department. And you have to hear that also back from the tree warden and you also have to be in contact with highway department.
Right, and there's also a lot going on on the 17th already, it's going to be a lot.
Although this, this discussion could be relatively short for the 17th.
Well, then I'm going to suggest that we punt to the 17th, Kevin, just with all the pieces that just need to be put in place, okay?
I understand, yep.
Okay, great.
I do have a quick question.
I'm sorry, we can't take it, Kevin.
The tree warden, do I need approval on the trees in the right of way before you guys can vote? Or is that just for that aspect of the work? You know what I'm saying? Because
Um, well, I'll take a stab at answering that. I, I think that might be something that could be addressed as, as a condition, but it is something that will have to be.
Oh, yes, I understand. But I just know the trees would have to get tagged in the right of way, right? And there has to be a, a public time on it.
Yeah, they have to be posted by the tree warden as being, as being targeted to be removed and there has to be a public hearing, so there is time involved with that, yes.
But would that have to happen before planning board could vote on my project?
I guess.
Yeah, Martha, you could be a condition. Is that, is that what I was hearing originally?
Uh, that's, that's what I'm thinking. Obviously, it's up, up to the board, but I think, I think that would be
A solution.
A solution.
Thank you. That clarifies.
Great, okay. So, um, I'd entertain, I guess, a motion to continue this to the 17th of February. Um, it'd be 7:15 to follow, Kevin, so bring a book to read.
Problem. I, I appreciate you fitting me in on the 17th.
Great, I had, I heard a motion from George, I think. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Is there any discussion, any discussion on uh, the motion? Any discussion on the motion, Larry?
Yeah, just a bit.
Larry, any discussion on the motion?
No.
Okay, great. George, discussion on the motion?
Uh, that it just doesn't include the reference to bringing a book.
Okay, that's very good. Uh, thank you. I appreciate that, yes. Um, Leslie, any discussion on the motion?
Nothing.
Great. Woody, any discussion on the motion? No. Uh, Mary, any discussion on the motion?
No.
On the motion, how do you say, Larry?
Yes.
Great, George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Great chairs and favors as well. Thank you very much. Thanks, George. Uh, thank you, uh, Kevin, thank you, Chris. Appreciate your, your understanding and patience through this process.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's pop back to our agenda here. So that concludes our public hearings. So I think we're going to go into our new business at this time, Martha. So do we want to kind of discuss what our game, what our strategy is here?
Um, sure. Uh, do you want me to start?
Yes.
Okay, so um well, a couple things. First of all, just to let you all know, town council has been retained to do an overhaul of our zoning and she's going to be starting that process. Uh, may have already started that process already, and that's something that will take some time and you know, will, will be discussed by the board at an appropriate time as there's, you know, as we start getting some input and suggestions. But in the meantime, there are a few items that are kind of critical to get done. The first of which is, is actually developing some special permit regulations. Because as you all know, we've got special permit regulations for certain uses like solar and wind and things like that. We've got special permit uh, regulations for certain uses in certain districts such as uh, certain uses in the residential agricultural district and in the water supply protection overlay district. But there are a lot of sort of uses in our, our table of use regulations which require a special permit, but we actually don't have um, specific regulations with which to review applications that we get. So right now, we're sort of relying on mass general law language, public health, safety and welfare and that kind of thing. So it's critical that we get some regulations on the books and town council has prepared a draft, which I sent all of you. Um, and I had a couple of comments on it. She, she and I have had a couple of discussions. So um, if everyone is in agreement, I think that is one that would be important to put forward for this coming spring town meeting. There are a couple of ones that we've had on our, our table for a while that we tried to get put forward last year. One was uh, regarding lot dimensions so that we can avoid some of the more unusual uh, subdivision plans that we've gotten. And also to finalize the wireless regulations. Um, that said, I did start to work backwards from a tentative spring town meeting date of April 27th, which may well be subject to change.
You want to pop that up?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, depending on what happens with um, our status with regard to COVID and vaccinations and so on and so forth. But um, if we take that as our target date right now to be in compliance with the process that's set out in mass general law, the board would actually have to refer any zoning amendments to the select board by um by their February 17th meeting. Um, or the board would have to vote to refer the, any amendments to the select board. Then they have to vote to refer them to the planning board for public hearing and their, you know, various timeframes in which this has to be done. And for example, the select board has to vote to refer the amendments to the planning board for public hearing within 14 days of the date that the planning board submits those proposed amendments to the select board. So I took a look at the upcoming select board meeting, so we've got January 26th, February 9th, February 23rd, March 9th, March 23rd and April 13th before the town meeting tentative date. I know that um, in the past, they've targeted about a month before the date to actually vote on the warrant and get that posted shortly afterwards. So we're looking at around March 23rd. And um so it's a fairly tight timeframe to try to get a lot accomplished. You know, in my opinion, the special permit regulations is, is certainly doable because we've got the draft from town council. The other ones, I think, um, maybe there, there's some discussion. But this is kind of the timeframe that we're working with right now, subject to change.
Well, the one good, one good bit of our, the way that we're operating business right now, we's not to worry about being stopped because of snow. So we won't be canceled because of snow. So that's the one good thing of our current situation. So we could actually stick to a schedule. It's going to be a tight schedule, but for one or two things, you think it's workable, Martha.
Um, certainly for one, and if we're well down the road on a, on a second, that would be workable. I think I, I sent town council the wireless regulations. And kind of, I'm going to take this down. You know, having taken another look at it, there were um, there were some, some things that needed to be finalized. One was identifying other locations in town where we might want to allow towers to go, for example. There needs to be some grant of location language for the select board to allow wireless facilities within the right of way. And I'm going to talk to town council about it, but I, I'd like to get a sense from her of whether it's doable within this timeframe or not. You know, we've got a draft, but it's not finished. And the lot dimensions is another really critical one. If we could get a draft together which would probably be some, you know, maybe a variation of what we had before, but with slightly clearer language, it would be good to get that on the table.
Would you suggest a, a, at least a one-day workshop uh, for us all to sit down and work on the lot dimensions to shore that up?
Um. I'm not I mean, I guess there are a couple of ways to do it. One would be if, you know, if individual board members would like to do some research on what other communities do and bring things to the table, we could do it that way. Or I can work with council and um, our conservation agent and building commissioner has some thoughts just from other communities that they've worked with. So I, I guess, I guess there'd be two ways to do it.
With Bill Holt and Peter Burnett?
Yeah.
We could do it in that direction?
Um, yeah, getting, getting input from them and putting together a draft and then having, you know, having the board review it at a, at a meeting.
Okay.
So we took a step, a stab at this. As you, as you recall, we had a couple, uh, meetings, couple workshops. I came up with kind of a, a thought process and, uh, and it kind of went into a little bit of a holding pattern. So there's been a little bit of work done. We've seen what has happened from some of that work that was done on our recent applications. So we kind of have an idea of what the true vision might be, what the board would like to see. Um, Larry, do you have any comments on this?
No, I, I mean, we, we did go the route last year of, um, you know, looking at some other communities and we put together what I thought at the time was a fairly comprehensive uh, plan, you know, for lot dimensions. We never did get to pull the trigger on it, but uh, I was taken aback, to be quite honest with you. When we got one of the yield plans, 105 High Road, that met all of the proposed requirements and still looked just as, as awful as, as the original. I mean, it, it just looked like a jigsaw puzzle. So I, I, I kind of, Martha, if you, I, I kind of like Martha's second suggestion. Um, maybe if we have some knowledgeable folks we can rely on, uh, who have some experience with this, that maybe put something forward, might be the way to go. Because I don't think we were very successful when we did it last time, frankly.
So, you know, you're saying too that uh Bill Holt and Peter Burnett could be um, very useful in helping us make that decision.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, yeah. I've already had a brief conversation with them about this a while back and, and they, they both indicated that they um, you know, that they, they did have some suggestions based on other communities that they've worked in. And I've also gotten some, some language from attorney winner. Which is not, you know, not necessarily 100% applicable to some of the situations we have here. But I think that, you know, with those sort of, that professional input um, we should be able to come up with something. And I, I, I think based on what we had last year, trying, you know, trying to make it as simple as understandable as possible will be also a plus.
Yeah, I think so. I think that the last draft was a little too difficult for people to really grasp easily, you know, just, just from the, from the script.
And I, yeah, and the other thing is presenting at a town meeting, uh, we're going to be using this type of format for town. Is that correct, Martha?
Um, well, I think the idea is to schedule at a time when it's safe to actually hold it in person. And whether we do it distance as we did before or what, I'm not, I'm not sure yet. But I, I think town meeting actually cannot be held.
Remotely.
Remotely.
Okay. Uh, so it's going to be, you know, the presentation factor too, Larry.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so let's just, let's just uh, bounce back to special permit regulation. So Martha, we have a kind of a, a draft that has been circulated. Do you want to?
I can pull that up if you'd like.
Sure, that'd be great. Has everyone had an opportunity to take a look at this draft?
No.
Okay. Um, and Martha for tired eyes.
Yeah, um. Getting there.
Otherwise, everybody's going to be leaning into the camera.
Yeah, nobody wants a close-up of that.
Alright, how, how's that?
That's great, that's great. Um, so so the special permit, as we can see, is intended to sections provide the destination of the border agency. We can read this. Um, and so some red lines that we've already talked to about uses, the use and regulation. Um, Larry, did you have some thoughts on some supplemental language under the criteria?
Well, I, we, we had a discussion and um, in particular criteria C, excuse me, D, neighborhood character, which I think is probably self, fairly self-explanatory in social structures. I don't know what that means. Uh, and I'm not sure anybody does. So I went and I took a look at some of our bylaws to see if there was any language that might serve to where, you know um, in place of that for where I think it's going. And I'm really not sure, but I, I took a look at the uh, OSRD bylaw and it has language in there. Uh, these are the secondary purposes for OSRD of the following, to prepare and enhance the community character and protect the value of real property and uh, in this solar of
I thought, I'm just going to, I'm just going to interrupt for a second, Larry. Martha, something happened to our screen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me.
Alright, I was pulling up uh
Gotcha.
Okay.
Alright, so can you see this?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Larry.
Um, and I, again, I, I'm not, I'm not married to any of this language, but I was just trying to look, look for something that, that might be more easily understood than social structures. And in the uh, solar photovoltaic special permit bylaw, it has language that talks about the proposed use and development will not have a substantial or undue adverse effect upon adjacent property, the character of the area, or the public health, safety, general welfare, or the nature and intensity of the attended operations will not discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings, uh, nor the value thereof. I don't know if any of this is anything the board would be interested in. And of course, the other obvious uh, way to address this would simply be to delete the word "social structures" or "in social structures." So I just put it out there for discussion.
Okay, so as Larry has framed, what are people's thoughts? Outside with George.
Uh, on social structures, I haven't even thought about that. No, I, I have no thought on that right now.
Okay, alright. Uh, Leslie?
Yeah, it just doesn't seem to fit in with the, the rest of the the sentence that is put up there. The social could, it, it's such a gen- general term.
Yeah, it's very ambiguous. I don't know what it means.
Yeah, I mean, if I, if I may clarify, I think the um I think the intent of this was to um you know, for example, if you have a project which is in, say, commercial highway district, but it's on the edge of a uh, residential agricultural district. So it's something that might be appropriate for the district in which it's proposed, but not necessarily appropriate for the district that's immediately surrounding that. You know, the intention was to, to uh, be a little bit broader than just neighborhood character. But I, I had the same discussion with town council. I think it's ambiguous and kind of open to interpretation, so.
And I agree with you, Martha, and town council on that, because I think we've uh witnessed a couple of different things that have come before the board. That, that was kind of part of what the meeting was about. And so I think, you know, and you get the, the it should be, I think that it should either be eliminated or um specified to what exactly it means.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I see benefit to having something in addition to neighborhood character. And I think some of the language that, that Larry has found may, may, may go to some of the issues that social structures is trying to address.
Right.
Uh, Woody, any thoughts on that?
Basically, take it out. Um, the, I don't know, I, I'm joking, but a social structure, like where they refer into a gazebo or something, but I'm kidding, but uh, as far as neighborhood character. But as far as neighborhood character, that kind of sums it up and add Larry's language to it.
Okay, so modify it, maybe put some supplemental languages Larry has suggested. Okay, great. Mary? Yes, George.
Back on the social structures.
Yes.
That would either had to be broadly defined, probably in a second paragraph or removed. Because if it's not removed and left the way it is, it's an invitation for people to go to court. When you have a contentious case, that is just the invitation to say, let's take it to court. And it would be a very interesting case.
So you would like some more?
I I see as like.
Hold on, Leslie, hold on. George, so you'd like some more definition of parameters established?
Yeah, I don't know what it means. It has to be defined fairly strictly, otherwise it's it's pretty open ended.
Okay, all right, so maybe Larry's approach or descriptor that he's suggested might be beneficial.
Yes.
Okay, great. Mary, did I get to you?
No.
Okay.
Very strong on this. Take it out. Take it out. Don't try to explain it. Don't try to go there. It's too arduous. It's too timely and it's not necessary. End of story. Just take it out. By the time you end up trying to explain what it is, you've confused everyone and then forgot about neighborhood character in the first place.
So, so the question I'll I'll pose is, is neighborhood character. A a closed enough definition or understanding when we have a budding. Zone districts that are different. So we have a business that is going to be in a commercial zone business and it's appropriate for it to be there. But we have a residential neighborhood, which is across the street from it, which is very different. And so it has a different neighborhood character than the commercial character. So does the commercial character take precedence over the neighborhood character because it's owned? That's what that's that that's that's what that's the rub. And we're trying to figure out the rub, how to resolve the rub. I know.
I see where you're coming from on that one for sure.
And I think that's where some of the language that Larry's proposing to add.
I I have a suggestion. When are we gonna come back on this?
I think we need to come back on it at the next meeting.
Okay, what if, I mean, this is, as I believe this is the only point of discussion for this bylaw. What if we were to, Martha, come back with several different versions, one with the term simply stricken? And then, and I'd be happy to work with you and maybe one or two other options with some of the. Inspired by some of the language we've been looking at, let the board look at it and see what we think.
Okay, I I'm very amenable to that suggestion, Larry.
I mean, it it's a lot, I mean, I just rattled off a lot of language here no one has in front of them. It might make more sense, be a lot easier to absorb if if you had something to look at.
Okay.
Good Lord. And and maybe we'll decide the best thing is just strike it, you know? Go with neighborhood character, period, but.
Okay, I think Martha was advancing to just with a couple more red line items that you were popping up there, Martha?
Yeah, just a couple. The reference that was in the original version to rules and regulations, this special permit granting authority was. Stricken because they still need to be developed. Exterior lighting was added to conditions because that's something that the board, you know, would appropriately be reviewing as part of that. And then there was a a section at the end about applicability or non-applicability to single and two family structures. Which also is is just not relevant after discussing with town council. So the suggestion was to strike that.
So Larry, it looks like you just have a little bit of work to see if we can find to that point C. Yep, okay. And hopefully that'll be helpful for us to then submit to. The Board of Select Persons. Okay, Martha, any other questions or comments on that?
No, I don't think so. I think I think that's a good plan.
Beautiful. So might, yep, and let me see, was there anything else on that agenda that we wanted to touch on? Oops, wow, that could big. The size of this thing is gonna pop up the right side. That's what I want, small. Do we want, what dimensions, we're going to kind of. Try to go with Larry. What do you think?
Well, I think we talked about that.
We're gonna work with.
Building and in conservation, but is there any, any, yeah, any other thoughts on it, Larry?
I wish I had some.
Okay.
Something to contribute, but I I'm.
I want to put a power parallelogram, you know, inside of the triangle.
I don't know.
Down the road, no, okay, all right.
I'm getting an ice cream headache, as they say, you know.
I could use one of those right now.
Wireless, Martha?
Wireless, I think I would like to get some feedback from town council before we decide on on trying to push this. My 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 concern is that it, given the timeframe, it will be too ambitious.
Okay.
I I know that at least one of the select board members is very concerned about this and it's a very valid concern. But I also want to make sure that we get it done right.
Right, it's a big deal.
It is, it is a big deal.
It's a big deal.
Yeah.
Martha, is the biggest concern. Location?
That's certainly part of it. You know, right now we've got an overlay district and the suggestion was because of the. You know, the areas where we have bad coverage or no coverage, that we should try to expand that. But, you know, trying to make that decision finalize the language and it may be that putting it in the overlay. District language right now isn't even really appropriate because we're dealing with broader regulations than just an overlay district. Now, the regulations cover citing those facilities outside of the overlay district. So it just may, the questions may be bigger than we can answer right now.
And the part of Newbury that suffers the most from not getting good benefits from wireless. Is the.
Well, there are areas of Plum Island, I think that.
Old Town Hill and.
Black Black Duck Circle because there it's in the shadow of Old Town Hill and then some parts of Byfield.
And then that that has to fall into parameters of. Not putting up. Towers, people, that the towers would not be accepted in those areas, but that's the only way to do it.
Well, I think a couple of those areas were areas where it was suggested that we do allow towers outside of where we allow them right now. And then otherwise, it would be, you know, other other technologies such as, you know, mounting them on poles and that kind of stuff.
Since the technologies are changing.
Right, right.
Quick, so.
So I'm gonna be meeting with town council on Monday and hope to be able to have a discussion with her about this. And so I can report back to the board and see whether, you know, whether it makes sense to try to move it forward or else try it for the fall. Time goes by very quickly.
All right, is there anything else to discuss this evening?
We were gonna talk about submission deadlines.
Yes.
We could have that discussion next time.
No, we can have it. Let's have it. Let's have it. We we a quick discussion.
Do you want me to kick it off?
Please.
Okay.
This was in regards to they've changed back to what they were before COVID.
Uh, this is what Larry proposed, this, we're reviewing what his language on this.
That's part of it.
Is that correct?
That, okay, yeah, yeah, that's a part of it. And Leslie, to to answer your question, it it goes partly to the fact that. We can't stay deadlines anymore. So we had, you know, we had a little bit of control and wiggle room in terms of when we got submissions in. And when when the public hearing could be scheduled to start. But it all, and but it also goes to the fact that we continue to be. Receiving a lot of, a lot of submissions, a lot of new applications, drafts that need to be reviewed before they get submitted. And situations where we've had recently where an applicant will submit something, you know. 24 hours or 36 hours before the board is is scheduled to meet. So part of the discussion is kind of setting, setting a hard and fast deadline for when things will be accepted to be on the agenda at all. And second would be if somebody is planning to submit an application to the board. Essentially, when when a draft needs to be to me for review. To make sure that it gets on to to an agenda. Certain date.
So the intention is to have it appropriate workload with materials to be able to be reviewed. And then once things are in the pipeline or an applicant has a has a an application process. If they're gonna be doing any modifications to get that information to us beforehand, not 24, $48, three days. Because it's just not enough time to circulate, it's not enough time to review. If we have to send it up to peer review, it just is not gonna work. And it's not appropriate. So Larry was working on some guidelines from other towns. And we kind of looked at what those might look like for hard and fast. And then there was a discussion yesterday, and Larry, do you want to touch on that?
Well, and just Martha and I actually started this conversation quite a while ago. And I came, I do, do they have, do you all have the?
Yeah, Martha will screen here.
Yeah. All as I did, honestly, is I just looked at our board, select board policy, which is, I I think that has to be submitted by 4:00 PM. Or something the Thursday before a regular meeting. And I also took a look at the select board policy in Andover because I was familiar with it, having worked there. And I just sort of came up with this language. And and it's really just to kick off a discussion. The the whole idea is just to put a a deadline on when, you know, things have to be submitted for a meeting. I I stayed away from picking a day of the week, just because, you know, you might want to have a a special meeting. Or be, you know, because of an intervening holiday or something like that, you might change your regular meeting to another night. And then just gave, tried to put in some discretion, particularly in the chair, in the event. You know, that some special condition might come up where you might want to take something. What I haven't been able to figure out is what we would need to do to adopt this regulation, whether it requires a public hearing or not. Our policy, excuse me. And, you know, there it is. I mean, I I I think we ought to get something in place, even if it isn't perfect. We can always fine tune it at at some later point. But. And again, the other big question, I I just have not been able to. Find, and then I'm sure it's there. I I just, my my reference material is pretty limited now. And our research material, I I'm sure that the way to do it, I just can't figure out what the steps are, what what you have to do. And it may be something as simple as adopting it at a meeting, or it may require a public hearing, I'm not sure.
That I can check with town council when I meet with.
Brian probably knows, off the top of his head. And I'd certainly welcome any other suggestions that anyone might have. You know, for additions or deletions or whatever.
I have one. Is that okay, Pete?
Sure, absolutely, Mary.
Um, Larry, thanks a lot for doing that. It's very helpful. I scanned it and hard and fast. I think it's, I think it's very important to have this. For everyone's sake. However, when you say hard and fast, then you've got two sort of exit strategies in the in the. Language, which one is, if there's an emergency, you're off the hook. And if the planning board decides that they want to make an exception, you're also off the hook. So I thought that was kind of not hard and fast. In other words. Make it firm. And then reserve the right to, I I don't know what an emergency would be except for COVID-19 or something. Or if the person, the applicant had an emergency. But I think it just opens the door for somebody to abuse the whole deadline.
Well, it it raises the issue, who defines emergency, you know?
Right, so then then you're back to more, and what what's it mean if the planning board decides to let it go and then we're gonna give you more time?
You could simply, you can simply put it in the discretion of the chair because.
Yeah.
In fact, it it is well within the discretion of the chair to determine what.
That's correct, that's correct. Bingo, you got it right there. That's it. That's all I do to say hard and fast. You gotta do this and at the discussion of the chair, we can do this, right?
I would be fine with something like that, yeah.
Okay.
Other thoughts or comments from anyone? Let me see, George?
No.
Okay.
But I forgot them.
Okay.
Ice cream headache.
That's exactly what it was. I, yeah, there was a comment that I had about just looking ahead to what's coming up before the town meeting. That the board be very busy on items that we're concerned for for the town meeting, loading up meetings with hearings. And we just have to be cognizant that we have to have the time to do the job for the town. And for the municipality in a sense of doing town meeting work, getting ready for that. So we don't want to overload it, or we will have a meeting every month or every week to get through it all.
Okay, Leslie, any thoughts on what Larry has said?
The only thing that I could think of was, you know, when you. Have to submit to putting it out there publicly publicly. That that could be into the same timeframe. As far as getting onto the agenda. That's the hard and fast. That's, that's all I have to say.
Woody, any thoughts?
In fairness to everyone, meaning applicants and. Board members and Martha. We we need to have something in place and it would be nice to, if everyone know, just knows there's a odd fast deadline. And that's when the information has to be provided from the applicant. And then we work with it from there. And if there's, like, like we discussed already. If there are any problems. It could be at the discretion of the chair.
So I I think that does allow for a little bit of wiggle room and a little bit of ability to be flexible. But at the same point, we have some parameters that are that are kind of heads up to applicants that this is what we're gonna be doing for business. And this is what's gonna be acceptable. So I I think Martha, you have kind of a a sense from the board that people feel that this would be helpful. And discussion perhaps, you know, with Brian, help with this would be beneficial.
Right, in terms of process.
Right, and whether we need.
Follow it under drop dead deadline.
Yeah, well, or 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 working guidelines, you know, operating guidelines, you know, whatever Brian would think would be the more appropriate language. Policy. And does that require any specific acts for this board to then investigate? Or if it's just an operating policy internally that we have as our our way of doing business. But I think it, I think it's necessary, it's appropriate, and it'll be beneficial. So I think, yeah, you've heard from the board and I think everybody's in support of of doing something like that. Good. Very good. Larry, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I know that we. Now, Martha, is there anything else that we would like to talk about?
I think we're done.
Perfect. That being the case. I would love to entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, there's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second to that? I wonder if there's any discussion on this. I, if there's any discussion on this. Okay. Uh, roll call, Larry, how do you feel on the motion?
Yes.
Great, George?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody.
Yes, and good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Yes, and thank you, everybody, and good night.
Thank you. Be well, folks.
And you as well.
All right now. Thanks, Mary. Thanks, Martha.